He grabs it Delilah comes over.
Because maybe he was like, it's a baby and I know it's a baby. Oh, man, that would be like, can we get a second dog?
Yeah, no, we don't want a second dog.
I mean, at least you.
All right, I'll call to order the Tuesday, December 2nd meeting of the Eastham Select Board. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at www dot eastham hyphen ma dot gov. All right, so we have to start, of course, with my joke. And today's today's joke even made my grandson's groan, but anyway.
Really, and you're still.
I'm still gonna do it, yep. Why did the man name his dog Five Miles? So he could legitimately tell his doctor he walked five miles every day.
Actually, that's not a bad one.
That's not bad, well, that's that's.
We appreciate that.
Not nearly as bad as some of them.
Glad, I'm so glad now before we get. Again, any. Select Board information that's not on the agenda? Anyone?
But Turnip Fest was a great success. They had almost a thousand people through the door.
Quite a.
And. The Friends. Sell merch. That benefits the Friends. And they had also a very quite productive day and yeah.
It's in that a short amount of hours for all those people.
Yeah, yeah.
The Health Department turkey giveaway also was very successful.
Was it? That's great. The. The duck race. Was great and it was so great to see the kids there. Most of them had turnips painted on their face because they had been to the library. And they had fun with it and giving away. Turkeys and pies and the kids get to pull the ducks out. They it was a great time. So all of it worked worked well, so. Hats off to the turn up committee and to the rec department and everyone else who had anything to do with that.
And I think we have. Another town event this week.
Yes.
Saturday. Holiday on the Green. Does anyone have fast?
Any more details to.
We did the little. Gingerbread house.
Did they do those already?
Yeah, they're they're they've started for sure. They're definitely looking festive over there. Festivus pulls up.
Festivus pulls up.
All right. Drove by the other day. I was like.
Menorah is up. Baby Jesus is in place.
Yeah, we're good.
All is well.
Winds light up the night.
That's this.
That's his next Saturday?
This Saturday.
This Saturday?
The sixth that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Four, five, five, five.
Five.
I was guessing.
Okay, so there we go. Light up the night five at the green, the windmill green. So show up. Songs, there'll be some sure there'll be some refreshments and songs, et cetera. Good, good time by it all. And anyone? In the general public wants anything to say that's not on the agenda? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Anyone online? No? Okay, so we'll go right to the agenda. Chief and Deputy Chief Police are here to talk about police accredit accreditation. So. Please, whichever one.
Yes.
Wants to start, make sure the green lights on and we're set.
I first want to say I appreciate the jokes. My daughter's in college in Boston. I sent her a bad dad joke every day.
Oh, that's good.
The bigger the eye roll, the better the joke.
That's right.
Um, thank you for having us here tonight. We won't take a lot of your time. I'm sure you've all heard me talk about police accreditation before. I feel like if we've been talking about our whole lives. It's been a long process, but we have successfully achieved full police accreditation. As of, I guess, as of October. Um, we had a team of assessors from the Mass Police Accreditation Commission in our station for three days back in April, going over. All of our policies, some parts of our building, speaking to our staff. They call that the accreditation assessment. That goes on for three days. They reviewed that report over the summer and we were awarded accreditation in October at a luncheon out in Marlboro. Just in a nutshell, police accreditation is a it's a voluntary process. It's not required by the state. It's something we opted to enter into. And we have to meet a set of standards set by the Mass Police Accreditation Commission. And really what that is, is committing to the highest standards of professionalism in policing. Less than a third of the police departments in Massachusetts are fully accredited and only four other departments on Cape Cod are accredited. We're becoming the fifth. In addition to aligning our policies and our operations with those standards, we also have to agree to allow inspections, if you will, of those standards going forward. So in three years, we need to open our doors again and in somewhat it can be more of a difficult process actually prove that the policies that we implemented and the operations that we implemented, we have been following. And we get reaccredited every three years. I want to thank Deputy Chief DeShawn. I'm going to ask him to speak on the whole process just briefly in a second, but he is our accreditation manager. He has been our accreditation manager for. Ten years, a little more. We were we are a certified agency before we were fully accredited, which is kind of like step one to getting to accreditation. He has been working tirelessly over the last couple of years to get us to this point. This would not have been possible without all of his work. Whether it's, you know, amending policies, writing new policies, working with staff to change operations that we're doing. The hard work that he's put into this, really, it wouldn't have been possible without all of his hard work. So I'm going to ask him to just go over the process real quick, explain that, and then I'll wrap up with a couple of things.
Thank you. Like the chief said, certification is kind of the first step of the accreditation process. It's a significant milestone to achieve towards getting fully accredited. And a little bit of the backstory for our department is we got certified in 2016. And then what happens once you're certified is every three years that assessment team or a assessment team will come and reassess your department. And those are kind of the more stressful assessments because it's it's easier to kind of put everything in writing and say, this is what we're gonna do. But the reassessments are when they come back to make sure everything is in practice and you can prove compliance with all of it. So we were able to get recertified in 2019 and then we were up again to get recertified in 2022. Which just prior to that is when the chief came and spoke to me about if he thought it would be possible for us to achieve full accreditation. Not for the 2022 assessment because it was approaching very quickly. So we achieved that one and then started working towards full accreditation, which unfortunately happened to align with when the Accreditation Commission rewrote all the standards. And they came out with the sixth edition, so we had to go back and kind of redo all of our original ones. And just to kind of describe the two parts of the process, certification has 178 mandatory standards that you have to meet. And some of the standards might be a one sentence standard. It might be as simple as a new hire has to take an oath of office before they before they. Perform any police duties, but some of the standards are six pages long and have 17 bullet points that you have to hit. So it's. The number of standards is kind of deceiving because there's simple ones and then there's very complicated ones. But the certification process, basically those 178 standards. Like I said, that's a significant milestone because those standards are based on the high liability, high risk situations, public safety situations and operational efficiency. So, once you achieve that, if you do want to go to full accreditation, you have to meet 96 more mandatory standards. And then based on the size of your department, there's a optional standards that you have to meet, which for us was 66. And so that's what like the chief was describing, we were able to do during that assessment process. Last April and then three years from now will be reassessed. Again, so like I said, that's another challenging part because that's when they come back to make sure that we're still doing all the stuff that we that we put into paper, but.
I want to recognize all of the staff at the police department for this award. This really would not have been possible without the buy in and the cooperation of all the off, not just the officers, but the dispatchers, the civilian staff. There are departments that struggle to get this done because of pushback from staff. And we had quite the opposite. I asked the officers that are on duty tonight to come. One had to leave already for a call. But, you know, I can't say enough about their willingness to adapt and and kind of as we molded our department into this process. It could have been a lot more difficult or not possible at all without them. So I applaud them all for that. And lastly, I want to thank Rich. Rich made the trek out to Marlboro with us to receive the award. He was obviously busy schedule this time of year with budgeting and everything, but he was able to adjust his schedule and, you know, we. We appreciate the buy in from our staff, but our staff also recognizes the buy in from from town management as well, and that that means a lot to everybody and they see that. So thank you, Richard. Happy to answer any questions. This is a. It's a big topic, but. That's really what we have for you.
So I have one, just, you know, sometimes when you. Reach a level like that opens up grant opportunities or different things like that. Is that something that is a possibility in the future?
So that's always a question that's asked. And as of right now, there is there is no, you know, magical grant opportunity that comes up just because you are accredited. However, there. In some of the grants we apply for, there are policy requirements that you have to show. And this accreditation should put our policies in alignment with any of those various grants that. We may have been there already before, but it kind of just tightens it all up. There is no accreditation grant, if you will, though specifically.
But it could help with other grants that.
It could, and I I think I think it lowers our liability in our department because we're doing the best practice of, you know, police policies. We've implemented them and we're following them. I'd like to think that it may attract good employees to come work for us because we we have already done this and we're showing that we're committed to excellence.
Yeah, that was my question to be, is it going to help with recruitment at all? It may.
I hope so. You know, if there's a lot of job openings right now. So if you're someone that's looking for a job and you're studying departments carefully, every little bit helps. So hopefully that would attract some people.
We have had like potential candidates to bring it up in the interview process, say that when they looked into our department, they saw that we were at the time certified and that that made pique their interest in our.
That's great. That's good. All right. Just did you?
I was just curious what you thought were kind of the three biggest points that you had to achieve. With the certification, like maybe the top three things that you're most proud of that are associated with this.
It's a great question. I think. A lot of talk was made back, you know, 2020 and beyond about use of force by police departments and. Maybe actually one of the things I'm most proud of is because we already had a lot of those policies in effect, we didn't have to make a lot of change. We were already. In line with what the changes were to become. So I think we're kind of, I like to think we're ahead of it a little bit, you know, we were already committing to that before we were, you know, told what we had to to commit to. I think just a general. Professionalize a professionalizing of the whole department, our whole operation. Everything has a policy. I think the officers like that. I think they, you know, if there's. They make traffic stops every day. That's a routine thing for them, but sometimes things pop up that aren't routine and they can refer back to the policies. The policies are well written. They're very clear on what they need to do, notifications they need to make. So kind of a flow chart, if you will, for for whatever comes up. I think that's important as well. So. I I think I don't know if I can point to three little specific things, but just the overall picture. I think I feel more comfortable with the direction and the the written guidance that we have.
I would add to it kind of goes on with what the chief was saying with we were lucky with the buy in that we got from our staff because. A lot of those standards required new reports to be done, new annual analysis is to be done, new inspections to be done more frequently than they were before. And, you know, I kind of felt bad in the beginning because I'm just firing out emails to, you know, our evidence officer, saying that we now need to do. So many inspections a year and and to. Just our sergeants that they had to do more analysis on certain things that stuff they didn't have to do before and we didn't get any pushback from anybody, you know, there was no. Which some departments have run into roadblocks with that and haven't been able to get past it. So I think it's a it's a real testament to our staff that they were all on board and there wasn't. I mean, there might have been some complaining behind my back, but there was no complaining straight up to us.
That's great.
There may have been some jokes about his email.
I just had one question was kind of like a little bit like Jamie's. What was the biggest stretch thing that you had to do? What was the hardest thing that you had to to do in order to be able to create this compliance?
I think we could probably go all the way back to when we got certified, the initial steps. We had to make some changes to our building. Which are some of the harder things to get done, you know, financially and getting, you know, people in to do the work. For example, we had to have an outdoor evidence storage building for, you know, things that are fireworks, things that are flammable, which we didn't have. So we had to get over some of those hurdles. You know, further on in the process, a lot of it is just either implementing new written policy or changing existing policy to be in compliance. So that becomes. A little easier to do as long as you have the support of the staff.
Interesting, right?
So it it sounds like this touched. Parts of policing that I don't think I thought of of like a storage locker that isn't flammable. Which now they. So the building won't explode and that seems really obvious now that you say it and I commend you for doing it. Change is hard, especially. If people are used to doing it. A certain way and then you ask them to change it. It's it's a struggle regardless of what the change is. And I was wondering if there were any. Education required, like education standard. Right, training or education standards that changed. As a result of this, or you could generally talk about.
Yeah, there's quite a few. Trainings that we were we were actively, we've always been a department that focused on training. So we were doing them, but maybe not annually. And so some of them we had to start doing annually and more. Of our policies need to get sent out to it it way back when we started, you'd read a policy, sign off on it and then you'd never see it again. So and there still are some small policies that might be like that. You sign off on when you get hired and then you never see them again, but. It's a lot more policies that get sent out on a yearly basis or biannually that people need to review. They they have tests linked to them. They have training, like PowerPoint trainings linked to them. And all of that is required by the standards, but it's also they're all required for a reason like it's. We might not have been doing it as frequently as we should have and that's making us do it. And then when we get reassessed, we have to prove each year of the assessment period that we did. All the trainings that are required. And obviously, like the chief said, the commission put together these standards. So a lot of thought and research was put into where what cert what areas should get the majority of the training and.
This really encompasses every every single little nook and cranny of the of the work that is done at the department. You know, every Tuesday morning, our emergency generator starts up and runs a test on itself. We have to document that to show that we have a generator that functions in case of power outage. So it's just. It's literally every single little piece is touched somehow by it. So. He's right that that, you know, the staff, that there's a lot more work after implementing this and they they willingly accepted that and and move forward with it.
That's great. As a lawyer, I really appreciate it or might reduce our liability. I think that's fantastic. So thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it and. Hope the we have a nice, safe, happy. Holiday season. It's already begun. All right.
And presumably they posted about it on their Facebook.
Yeah, that got posted back in October.
Okay, sweet.
Oh, you know what? Wayne was trying to get that award simply. How about both of you hold it up here so Wayne can get a nice picture of it so people can see. See him? There he is. All right. We appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda, Linda, Sassy, our town clerk. Talking about proposed amendments for regulatory board appointments. Thank you, Linda. Make sure the green lights on. You got the floor.
Hi there. Thanks for giving me this time. This kind of started off as emails between. The search committee, myself, Jackie, we kind of went back and forth. It all boiled down to the origins of whether or not. Part time residents could be on the four regulatory boards. So, you know, we couldn't. I looked in everywhere. I looked in the charter. I looked in the home rules. I looked everywhere. We didn't have it. We we didn't have a vote anywhere in any town meeting or any select board meeting or any policy for that matter. So it was just a matter of I went to Jackie. I said, well. I guess the select board would just have to vote on it. So that's kind of what I typed up for you. Was that the. Four regulatory boards, which consists of the Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. Can only consist of members who are full time residents. A full time resident is defined as someone whose primary domicile is the town of Eastham. And spends a total of more than 183 days of the year in Eastham, including days spent partially in Eastham. Which is the mass state definition of a full time resident. So that's part one. I don't know if you want me to go through all three or what. So the other part of this is the. The chair, we've had some. Folks asking about the regulatory boards and whether or not the chair. Should be. In person for these types of meetings. So I typed that up too as number two, the chair of each regulatory regulatory board meeting must be in person for each meeting. Unless there is an illness or disability that prevents them from chairing the meeting in person. If they're unable to chair the meeting in person, the vice chair should chair the meeting. And that's what you guys do.
Right, it. One question on that, Linda, for me, and I don't know if anyone else has one. I'll. So the regulatory boards cannot have. A Zoom meeting.
Yes, they all.
Yes, they all can.
They all do now.
They if they do now, then I don't understand. The necessity for number two.
Just the chair is what.
Just the chair.
So the chair has to be.
In person.
In person, some.
It's a hybrid meeting.
Somewhere here in a hybrid. So you can never have an all Zoom meeting. It has to be a hybrid meeting.
You could have an all Zoom meeting.
But if there's a hybrid meeting, it's too it's too difficult for the chair to be on Zoom. And have people.
Everybody else.
In place.
That's that's right. And that I understand.
It's the both. If you're all remote or all in person, we have no problems. But when we start to combine the two, it's nice to have the person running the meeting.
At the meeting.
Okay. Can we adjust number two?
You guys can do anything you want.
This was the policy, right? If it's an all. Zoom is probably not the right.
So you just want to say that in the like in the event of a hybrid meeting, the chair of regular. Must be in person.
Right, not the vice chair must be in person.
Yes.
In a hybrid meeting. We can change it to say, yeah, that that would. That answers my question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any other question before we go on to have Linda go to number three? Jamie?
I was just gonna say, I know we voted on that, but. I mean, it's just you need to revote. As far as like the.
Yeah, because we couldn't. Couldn't find.
I think we I know we talked about it extensively, but I don't, we could not find a vote.
No.
Well, we should just have a vote. I mean, and since it's a select board appointment, the select board can.
Yeah, select board.
It's your policy.
It's our policy.
It's a policy.
There are appointments. Okay, number three.
Okay, is just. As is, there's already a town policy that boards and committees should reorganize at the beginning of the fiscal year or the soonest meeting after the July 1st. By a vote of its members. The select board encourages regulatory boards to rotate the roles of each committee member. We're finding that that's not the case with certain boards.
So maybe by taking this vote today. It it will, I would imagine. Refresh these regulations and. What would be the best process for kind of informing every board and committee?
Like we just send out the policy?
Right.
And then again, the wording of this is that. They still get to choose if they want to retain the same chair, but at least they're making an intentional choice every.
Have to vote each year.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Bob, not suggesting this, just. Should we be thinking about term limits on any of this?
There are.
There are. There it's a three.
Three terms.
Three terms, right? Unless there's a.
Unless you guys extend it.
Extend it or or if no one. Has applied for that. I think that was a change in the charter. If no one is, no one has applied for vacancy, the person can. I guess be reappointed, be reappointed. It's automatic in the charter.
For a year.
That will come.
For a year.
Of this. In 2026.
That's known as a holdover. They get a hold on you.
I mean, it's I I realize how difficult it is for some committees to get people to be on these committees, especially the regulatory boards, because there's a it's a big time commitment.
Right.
However. You know, it's it's kind of gotten to be where some of these committees, you find they're on, people are on them for 15 years.
Yeah, it new new thoughts, new ideas. That's the idea for term limits and we encourage, well, it's required and we encourage people to. Volunteer to be on these committees.
Right. And I think that's why this is was coming from the search committee. They have a couple of new members on the search committee, ma'am. And they were like, look, we're trying to get people interested, but they're seeing the people on these committees and nobody's moving. And they're like, well, you know, I don't want to be an alternate for. Six years waiting to be a member.
I understand.
Search committee a little more.
So.
Sue Merritt is on, she says she's on Zoom. I don't know if she wants to speak to that because she is the one who brought all this.
Motion and then we can agree on the motion and then we can kind of move forward from there and see.
Yep, go ahead, Jamie.
So I would make a motion to, as written in our packet, except one as written. Right? Except two with a modification that in the event of a hybrid meeting, the chair of the committee must be present.
Yeah, put just put in in the event of a hybrid meeting right before the chair, right? That would do it.
And then three as written.
Second, Amy's a second. Further discussion. I don't know if.
Sue, if you want to say anything.
Would like to say anything?
Just have another question.
Oh, no, we'll go to Bob. Sue, hang on.
The chair must be. Either sick or disabled. Or they have to be here. I don't know if that's necessarily true.
Because there's vice chairs, right? Could a vice chair not chair the meeting?
Yeah. Like, we don't care if they're sick or.
Well, that's why I'm why I'm asking because it seems to me if they are.
Okay.
Unable to attend. Why don't we change the wording?
So.
In vacation.
So let's talk. So we have in the event of a hybrid meeting, the chair of each regulatory board must be. Must be in person for each meeting, period.
Or.
If if they are unable to chair the meeting in person, the vice chair should chair the meeting, period. That's it. So just knock out the unless clause. And you've got it.
Yeah, because the intention is that the person in the room chairs the meeting.
Right.
Because it does somewhat read that they could share it. Virtually if they had an illness or a disability.
Right, yeah, we've just got it. That's good. Uh, the Sue is. If you would like to say something, Sue, I think you're on mute right at the moment.
I can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add. I just I appreciate the clarity as as we learned from the police discussion, having some clarity is is really useful and I learned a lot about. The history from Jackie and Linda of how these things came into play and they were all great stories and made perfect sense. But we were just looking for something. I was actually asked directly by a part time resident, where does it say that? And I said, well, of course it says that. And then we started looking and it didn't. So so this will be really helpful.
Oh, yes, tomorrow you can show them here wherever it is said, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? This is so we the motion is accept one, accept three, accept. Two with adding in the event of a hybrid meeting before the first sentence and eliminating the useless clause in the first sentence. It's that sounds kind of funny, but yes, it's. It's, that sounds kind of funny, but yes, it's what it is. All right. Okay, we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Five, zero. Linda, thank you very much for bringing, bringing this to our attention. Thank you, Sue, for, for bringing it up, and it's now done. And someplace in writing, Erica will have it in writing for us on the minutes, all right? All right.
In our policies.
All right, now we go down to the one-day liquor license for Sirens and Sailors LLC, doing businesses sirens, sirens and sailors at four, forty-five hundred State Highway, the old Artichoke Place. Wanting a license on, for December fourth, Thursday, the fourth, uh, from five thirty to seven for, uh, wine and malt. And, uh, the question we always ask on this is if we do it five thirty to seven, that's it. Would you like it a little bit to have a buffer zone on either side, or is it five thirty to seven is exactly what you want?
Five thirty to seven.
Five thirty to, maybe like seven fifty, seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Five thirty to seven thirty?
Just in case, yeah. I'm Tiffany Blunt. I'm the new executive director for the Chamber of Commerce. So, um, this is, of course, for the business after hours that we partner with and.
I'm Haley.
Haley is.
I'm the owner of Sirens and Sailors.
Nice.
That's, that's excellent. I don't. Everything was pretty clear, so this will be for, you're, now we'll do it from five thirty to seven thirty.
Thank you.
P M's, not A.
That would be crazy.
Mimosas and Bloody Marys?
What can I say? That's an eight.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? And that motion is for five thirty to seven thirty.
Five thirty to seven thirty on the fourth.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Well, you, you have it. Now you can have a party. And we will, we'll end up, we'll end up signing this thing, so we'll be all set.
And I, can I, can, I'm really sorry. I have.
What?
Our.
No, um, we can, it, it'll be signed tonight, and then you can pick it up tomorrow or whenever. We can drop it off maybe even so. Good luck.
Thank you.
Um, so I know we just voted the policy on the chair being chair in person. And Karen, I thought Karen and Conservation Commission still had all, um, remote meetings. And Karen, the chair of our Conservation Commission, has been chairing the meetings from home on Zoom. And she does actually fit the, unless there is an illness or disability that prevents them from chairing the meeting in person.
They're all remote. They're, no, it's not hybrid.
She just. One person that comes and sits here, I think.
He said that, oh.
That's right. I forgot about him.
She, well, okay, so she said that Alex, it's usually just Alex at Town Hall and the, whatever applicant sent a butters.
Staff doesn't count.
Staff doesn't count. Okay, so everyone else, so all the members are.
Right, all the committee members are remote, so that's fine.
That's, yep. Okay. Okay. Okay, I just.
Okay.
Onto Bino. Okay.
That was close, though. That was a good outlier. Thank goodness she's paying attention.
Right.
No, I, I rang a bell in my brain. I was like, I should maybe just.
And if there's, you know, when you write regs and so forth, if there's an issue, you can look at it and try and fix it.
And just remember, this is a policy of yours. It is not a regulation. You change it anytime you want.
Okay.
So we can always go back and fix it.
Okay, all right.
Next.
Wonderful, thank you.
One-day game license for the Orleans Eastham Elks.
Oh, they're having Bingo.
Bingo on New Year's Day.
Bino.
Bino.
Bino, Bino, which is like Bingo, yes.
So is the.
Jimmy researched.
The original name of the carnival game that was renamed Bingo after a player's excited slip of the tongue, mispronounced it, so.
We think there was alcohol involved.
Potentially, that's okay, whatever.
Just one slip of the tongue made Bingo better than Bino?
Yeah.
Whatever.
You can see yelling.
What, what, what's in our, our packet says that they're virtually the same, so we'll, we'll do that. Anyway.
Okay.
So any, do I have a motion to grant the one-day game license for the Orleans Eastham Elks Lodge two, five, seven, two for January one, twenty twenty-six?
So moved.
And a second? All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
None.
Five, zero. That's done. Okay, onto administrative matters. We have vessel storage revised lottery rules. And I, we had this discussion, Amy brought it up first a while back. Uh, and, uh, it looks to me, the difference is only if you, uh, try and cheat with, uh, that's a wrong term. If you, if you put in, if you put in.
Pretty much, if you try to game the system.
If you were trying to game the system, you're going to be out for the, out of the lottery for the year, for that year.
Yeah. So I did have quite a long discussion with Scott Richards, our harbor master, about this. And, you know, initially I proposed, you know, letting people or making people just do one number for each person. But he said it's, it's really too, they'd have to each apply separately and then keeping track of, you know, people in the same household would be much more difficult. Plus, he had a really good point that he would rather people go out in pairs. You know, if they're out in the water.
Safety.
So I can't, can't argue with that. And he, I, last thing I want to do is make more work for them. Because this is just, you know, the, the only people really complaining are the people that don't win.
I don't complain, it's just.
Bob, I think we need to, or should, combine number two and five into one statement. One entry per household, multiple entries per household are not allowed.
Enough one, yeah, just like merge five into two.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great.
Yeah.
And number six become, six, seven, and eight become five, six, seven.
Yeah. But yeah, he, you know, he was being nice in only taking the first entry. And I'm like, yeah, no. I'm sorry, if there's people that are putting multiple in, hoping to get extra numbers.
That's true.
Make more work for them to try to find them.
Not only that, if you take just the one, they had greater chances of getting pulled out, so it, so they were gaming the system. All right, do I have a motion to accept the change and, and to also merge item two and item five?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Five, zero. All right, that's good.
And coming up, what, February fourteenth is one, I think, or fifteenth?
Valentine.
February fourteenth.
Yep.
Update on budget status. Go ahead, Rich, I guess, or she is. All right, Rich, it's yours.
Well, thanks. Um, it's been a challenging process. I don't know if you've been following along, but starting in the summer with the Finance Committee, we start the next fiscal year planning all over again. We've done, um, updates on various, uh, reserve funds or O P E B liability. Uh, we do a financial projection for the next five years on the impacts to operating budgets. Uh, we do a look back at the, uh, close of the prior fiscal year, so we can establish our um, financial position coming into the new budget. And, um, then in the fall, we start with the capital budget and then work our way into the operating budget. And, um, as of today, um, draft of the capital budget should be up on the website by tomorrow. I've sent it out to the Finance Committee, and it'll be a topic of, um, their next meeting to go over the capital budget. And at the moment, uh, we finalized a draft, uh, met with all the department heads and gone over the operating budget. And, uh, the good news to report there is that, well, good and bad, uh, good in that, uh, we are balanced, uh, by a thread uh, based on our two thousand twenty-six collective bargaining agreements. Um, but we have accounted for inflation and all other areas of the budget, like especially on the transfer station and transportation costs, and provided for a three percent increase for the school, all the, each of the schools. The bad news is, um, we won't be operating under our last year's, um, collective bargaining agreements. We're in negotiations with all five of our employee unions, and we will have new agreements that provide for, um, we've provided for steps, but we haven't necessarily provided for cost of living adjustments, of which there will be of some amount. And so those collective bargaining agreements, we've spoken to each of our unions about this, is that, you know, looking to have them be competitive in our area with wages. Um, but whatever it is that we agree to, we need, is going to be subject of an override at town meeting. And so we have to be conscious of that when we try to get to agreement. But back to the sheet here that I handed out to at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, the first thing I just wanted, since the capital budget draft is pretty much done, just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Um, as you may recall, we have four hundred thousand dollars of tax levy that goes to our equipment and vehicle replacement programs for each of our departments. Uh, and so that's, uh, continues to be the case. Uh, that four hundred thousand dollars is now a bit short from when that was implemented over five years ago. Uh, so we're supplementing those replacement programs or free cash. And so when we get to talk about overrides, um, one of the considerations might be to supplement uh, the tax levy funding of the capital plan. It's been a very successful program in the sense that since I've been here, we have not had to go out to borrow or bond for any route, what I'd consider a routine capital replacement, which is saves, costs over a hundred thousand dollars now with a bond council and financial advisory fees to issue bonds, plus the interest that you pay on them for things that we can reasonably and easily pay for if we're doing it, um, prospectively. Free cash, um, is sufficient this year. Uh, we had a very high certification for a number of reasons. I went over with the Finance Committee. And that largely supports our capital program, especially the, um, building, maintenance, repair, and maintenance, uh, funding. Uh, however, again, with inflation and the rising costs, uh, when I, several years ago, when we started these programs, uh, it was probably about a million, million two of free cash required every year to fund these programs. A recurring need for free cash, if you look at the five-year capital plan, is now approaching about two million dollars per year. So we're getting to a point where we need to generate a lot of free cash just to fund the capital programs, and that's just something you should keep in mind as we move forward. We don't anticipate any borrowing this fiscal year, uh, other than for the wastewater project, but nothing for, um, capital. However, we do have some things coming down the pipe that we've been working on for F Y twenty-eight. Uh, we've been working for several years and had a lot of grant funding for various town landings, four different town landings. And those will be coming to the point where we can move forward with actual construction, which will also be largely funded by grants, um, hopefully. But will require some degree of match, and since they're expensive projects, the match can also be quite expensive, too.
About the library roof? Is that?
That's, uh, at the moment, uh, being evaluated by engineers, uh, so we don't know where it stands yet. We do think, I think, Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, that we hopeful that there is a fix that can happen that we can afford within our capital replace, our building, maintenance, and repair program, because we have been funding it. And if that fix works, then we won't need to do the borrowing.
Okay, um, is that for F Y twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
F Y twenty-seven, so, um, I honestly, literally just received, just checked my email and it's there. The, yes, the cost estimate for the engineering work, so, um, the timeline we gave them was the town meeting timeline, so I should know, uh, including a cost estimate before we have to go to print with the warrant, so we'll know.
And then the other big project, and these are for F Y twenty, I would say are kind of along the discretionary line of thinking. Uh, but we've been working for a number of years and getting to a point on Route Six Engineering and Design work. And if we want to get on the state, uh, transportation improvement program or plan, the tip plan, uh, we will need to do some design, some level of design to get it to that point before they'll accept us into the program. So those are some of the big ticket items coming up potentially for next year. But all in all, the capital budget is funded for this year, and things are looking good, and we've got a good five-year projection. And I just want to remind everybody, like a lot of places, we do try to put everything in the plan. So every piece of equipment, every vehicle, every building is in that plan with some amount of dollars committed to it. So nobody has to wonder if, well, I like these items, but what is, what's not on there that you're not telling us about? And, and as much as we know, we've put into that plan, so I think it's a pretty solid plan. And we have at the bottom of that plan, how we plan to pay for it. So if you are interested in that type of thing, you want to know when potential bond, bonding might happen, you can go and look at that plan. We also have sufficient free cash to keep up our progress on, uh, funding our reserves, so our stabilization fund. Um, we're looking to add to, um, just because as the budget increases, the percentage required increases, but also to provide for some level of funding for, um, our elementary school and sped costs to help stabilize those on a year-to-year basis if needed. And we will continue our process, our practice of, uh, the unbudgeted short-term rental receipts going into our wastewater stabilization fund to continue to build that up as we go towards, uh, implementation. And, uh, smaller contributions, just, just for your knowledge, to extend you were, were or weren't aware, we do contribute to our other post-employment benefits fund, try to keep seeding that every year. Uh, it's fully invested, and hopefully will be helped to offset costs of retiree health insurance. And I O D stands for injured on duty. We're trying to build up a fund to get to a point that if we have a significant, um, public safety officer or firefighter injured on duty, we're by law required to pay for them. And sometimes those cases can go on for, you know, usually they're short, two weeks to thirty days, but they can go on up to, you know, I've seen it up towards a five years, not here, but in other towns. They're difficult cases to manage and get to resolution. So this fund, uh, typically what happens is we have to pay overtime to fill that person's shift, but still pay for that person. So we kind of want to self-insure that circumstance. And if that person is out, we can utilize this fund without impacting the operating budget, so, um, we continue to build that up. And then compensated absence funds just is a source of money, so we don't have to spike up operating budgets on a year-to-year basis, because we think we're going to have to pay out some vacation time for a longtime employee that might be retiring. This kind of keeps everything even keel. And then we'll still have some money left over if between now and, uh, the warrant development comes up, and we have some pilot projects or some special one-time programs, or want to contribute to some housing or taxpayer assistance programs, we will have some money available to be able to do some of that as well. Uh, which brings me to the operating budget. Um, like I said, it is balanced based on our existing collective bargaining agreements, but, um, anything that we agree to on these agreements will have to go to an override. Uh, this is not unique to Eastham, across the state, really. Um, but more acutely across Cape Cod. Uh, significant inflation in areas of, of vendors and contractors, insurance, and utilities, wages, and benefits. And it's just virtually impossible to maintain those costs under a two and a half or three percent without reducing something else. And so you gave us instructions to fund a level services budget, and, um, we were able to achieve that, but not with the negotiated, uh, collective bargaining agreements that will be coming into place. And I suspect the schools are going to have similar challenges, so that's why I put on here that we provided a three percent for education, but not likely to be sufficient. Uh, not quite in the order here, but a couple down, uh, item D. Uh, we did get enrollment figures for the schools, and that shift in enrollment, that enrollment shift always, again, another good reason for having some extra money in the stabilization fund if, if you have a one times, we think might be a one-time shift. Uh, this year, our enrollment went up about a percentage point. And that alone, based on the prior year's budget, results in about a three hundred thousand dollar increase in our assessment.
It's the regional?
To the regional assessment. Um, we also have, you know, if it wasn't hard enough managing your own local, uh, issues, uh, the states come up with some new regulations on inspections for short-term rentals. And so, um, you know, Jackie will give you the details on this, but, you know, we likely have the need to hire, uh, building inspectors of the, under the Building Commissioner. And perhaps even, uh, fire inspectors to do inspections on short-term rentals. And this is all comes from lobbying groups and in response to, you know, we had a local death out of state, a local person that passed away in New York due to a fire that wasn't properly inspected and didn't have smoke detectors. So those would be, you know, on top of our level services budget, that would be an add. But those are mandated, unfunded mandates from state legislation. In addition, uh, going through the process. In addition, uh going through the process, you've heard about some of these. But meeting with department heads, we've had several requests, and I'm just presenting them here for your consideration. So as we go through the process, we can consider whether these things ought to be added or we, or if we can't actually do them. Jackie, since I've spoken to you before about uh preschool program, uh it doesn't have sufficient funding for the demand, as well as some of our other human service grant programs, and so those could be service additions. Uh staffing for health and environment, and you've heard, I think, believe you've heard from open space folks looking for some additional con- conservation help. You heard from uh Council on Aging about staffing for um uh Council on Aging. Uh they had a couple requests, and I'm not to speak for them, but we currently do have the hybrid, hybrid program coordinator being covered by the friends and is on staff. So this request would be to continue that part-time position. And then they have a second request, which is a new position. Um recreation, um Jackie, I believe has spoken about this, where we've added the preschool program. No, not preschool program, uh
The after
After school program. So
Add a full day, full day summer program.
And didn't add any staff at that time.
So that, that, a quick question to interrupt here, sorry. Um the after-school program, do we, like, do we fill up, is there a waitlist, like?
Yes, that's the problem. So now we're getting complaints from parents who want to, you know, they want it to be available to their children, and we don't have enough staffing, even with part-time fill-in staff, we don't have enough staffing to increase the numbers. So every year, we try and expand it as much as possible. And usually um we can get every child served by October first. Usually the month of September is kind of a stored-out period, and then in October, she can get everyone served, but not always for the amount of days they need or want. So it's been a challenge for the past few years be- because we didn't add staff when we added that program, we just um and then the o- the other thing we did is we switched from a half-day summer program to a full-day program. Again, for parents who are working, these are essential services, so.
And is recreation's request for a full-time position or a part-time position?
Well, I think they would love a full-time F D, but I think we could, you know, we could negotiate that certainly, or have a shared position between rec and C O A, too.
Shared position would be great, because then you're offering full-time still.
Um and then we also heard from the Eastham Elementary School Committee. Um they're considering requests from some of their constituents about having a school resource offers, officer at the elementary school, um which might not be of, you know, a full amount of work for that type of position. Uh but the chief had uh has some other needs, and I think if combine, if that were to move forward, combining that with uh a victim services advocate that could work out of the elementary school. Um so that's a, a work in progress, and we would be asking the elementary school committee probably for their recommendation before we were to add that.
James? Any other elementary school have a resource officer?
Not that we're aware of, no.
So it's not standard?
No. Dennis is the only one who's moving towards it now.
There, there was an incident in Falmouth, and I think that that caused some concern.
Okay.
And it's come up at the Brewster School Committee.
I would be more interested to hear from parents on whether they'd like to, you know, if this is a situation of like juggling services, right? Where are our priorities? Are we looking at expanding after-school services so that people can have childcare? Or are we looking at putting a resource officer in the elementary school? And I think that um I have a pretty good idea on what I think I would hear from parents. Um as much as I have a lot of respect for our school committee, that's what, five people?
And they haven't taken it up yet, actually, they're gonna be discussing it.
I would be more inclined if this really came down to a, a serious push from them, I'd, I'd really kind of push back on that.
Well, that's why I'm putting it on the table, that's why you get an update, so you get a taste of it. And I, what I would anticipate is um as we go through the next few months, um you, you may keep the list, but now define it a little bit more detailed as to what it actually is, and have a cost assigned to it, or, or whittle down the list as the case may be, so. And then the final thing here is um still need to provide for wastewater costs, um kind of a, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, I guess, but who knew that we were gonna get an eighty-five percent support for the wastewater project? So at that time, we asked for the debt exclusion for the project, but not an override for the one point five million dollars of operating costs.
Even though we talked about it at town meeting, and it was included in the financial projections, we didn't actually ask for it.
So we don't need it yet, but I would like to have the capacity
Authorization, yeah.
Before we need it, so that when we do need it, it's there and we can just execute. Which brings me to the second page, the back page. So what might all this look like? At the moment, and this is why I'm presenting it to you, if you have any feedback, either tonight or in the future, let us know. But uh we'll have an operating budget article, and that article will present our current level service budget with a three percent provision for the element, for the schools, and it's balanced. And um my thinking right now is we ought to pass that budget at town meeting, uh let everybody know that we will need an override for the additional school costs that come in over the three percent, but not make it contingent upon the override. And the reason for that is if you make it contingent upon the override, and then the override fails at the ballot, then you have no budget, and you need to call a special town meeting and come up with a new budget. Alternatively, you could have a proposed budget with the override and a contingent budget if it doesn't pass. But it gets awful, um and it's a tough way to go, it's tough on the staff, it's tough on the community. Because you're forcing, you're telling people who is gonna be let go if, if things don't pass. So we have some flexibility within our situation here, and that flexibility is the short-term rental money. So what I'm suggesting that we would do in this is, we hope that the override passes, but if it doesn't, hopefully the amount, additional amount that the schools need is not more than one point two, one point three million dollars. Because if it is that amount of money and the override doesn't pass, we can use the short-term rental money to balance that budget. Because we really have no choice but to pay the school assessment once it's assessed to us, unless we get another town to join in on us to vote down the budget. That does obviously impact our wastewater funding plan, and so it is excluded debt, so we can still raise that, the taxes to pay for that debt. But it impacts, you know, our, how we funding wastewater.
Has the region hired a new finance director?
No.
Who's doing their budget?
They have the part-time person.
They have a, yeah, they do have a contractor.
Experienced contractor doing it right now.
So that's kind of the plan for the operating budget. It would require an override, likely would require an override for additional educational costs, which would be added to a general override ballot question. Our second town meeting article would be to ratify collective bargaining agreements and the funding required to fund them for the three years of the contract. That too, this would be contingent upon an override passing.
Totally.
But this amount of money would be added to the general override with the education, have a ballot question, because that represents everything we need for our balanced budget, our level service budget, with the new agreements, with new assessments from the school district. If that ballot question were to fail, again, we still have an actual budget that we can move forward with, and we could still move forward with our staff, because we'd still be paying them on the old FY twenty-six contracts. Inevitably, though, we would have to have settled contracts. We'd have to go back to the bargaining table, say, listen, the override didn't pass, can we do anything to make this better? And then we would get to something better, hopefully, but it would still be more than we have, so we'd still have to come back, have another town meeting, and have another ballot question. Because we don't have the capacity, I mean, I guess at that point, we don't have the capacity to fund the current level of staffing with what they're asking, so our, our response then would be would go to a subsequent town meeting with, here's what it looks like if you pass the override. And at that point, we would have a contingent budget showing in, here's the reductions that would happen to our budget and our staffing if it doesn't happen. Um and then finally, or not finally, um Article Three, Budget Article Three for Town Meeting would be any of these supplemental items that you might wanna consider, and that's what we have to flesh out over the next few months. Do you wanna consider them, do you wanna put them on the ballot? I'm envisioning that this would be one question, but a, but each with its own line item. And we could, you know, vote them as a slate or vote them individually, people can pull them out and discuss them individually if they want. Uh but it's your, really your call, it's your warrant to add what you want of these items to be on that warrant.
If we wanted to do them separately at town meeting, we would have to, you would there have to be separate elect ballot questions for when they, when they vote three
You're in my next section.
Two weeks.
It's a good question. You could do a town meeting, you know, you could do it separate, or you could do them together, or you could combine some of them together, however you wanna do it. Um but when you get to the ballot, the ballot potentially would have three or more override questions, the first being the general override for collective bargaining and education. The second, perhaps, and again, this is, um we're get, looking for your feedback, should we just ask for the one point five million dollars for wastewater now? Just get it all on the table and ask people to vote on it? If they gave us that capacity, we don't need it this fiscal year, but I probably will need it next year, some piece of it. So it's incumbent on us to steward that one point five million, just like we do steward the three years of the collective bargaining agreements and not use it for other things, so that when we need it in year two and year three, it's available for us to use.
So we'd be asking for the authority to raise it, but we wouldn't be raising it, so it wouldn't go on the tax levy right away.
In the second year out, perhaps we would need some, but not the full one point five. So we steward it, and you only implement it and use it when it's needed for wastewater.
By stewarding it, you mean we wouldn't ask for it? We wouldn't have the funds, we just say that we're gonna hold the authority over here and not use it for this.
That's right.
Okay.
Rich, um do you, are we gonna get something like this at this level? That gives us, that assigns some numbers, you know, dollars to some of this, or do we need to go under the hood?
Oh yeah, that's a while, I think that's gonna be a little
Yeah.
I, I just have a real hard time looking at adding to staff when we've got so many other things. And particularly the un, the big unknowns with this collective bargaining going on.
Yep.
With three, it's, it was, it's three uh entities, correct? It's fire, police, and
Five.
Five.
Five, okay, so, I mean, it's, it's almost a fool's errand for me to be looking at this without knowing that what looks like
Right, well, that's why I just wanted to give you the primer.
No one's asking you for a decision.
Right, I'm just
We will have absolute details by the time we do ask you for a decision, but it's really important to get the lay of the land.
Yeah.
You know, you don't wanna be, we don't wanna be talking to in April and have asking for things and have you say, oh my god, where did that come from?
Yeah, Bob, just to give a little, like, this is pretty early for us to receive this information um in the big scheme of things, and I was actually gonna thank you for it, because normally we don't get kind of a broad overview like this, this early. Um and so it doesn't surprise me that, that we don't see any of the nitty-gritty details to it, it's just kind of these like broad sweep, something to consider as we start to step forward. It's a kind of like the first exposure to all of this, so now we've seen it, and now it'll become more and more tailored as we walk down this path, and like things will start to fall off the sides, and, but this is kind of like everything that I imagine you're looking at right now.
This is the entirety of what I think could be impactful to the budget.
So it's just going to go down from here, but
And you have had presentations like the C O A saying, we need to people, so we're just, we're keeping track of all those requests right now.
I, I get you, it makes, that's fine, I'm just saying it's a, it's a swirl at this
It is.
It's, it's frightening, but it's also, it's, w- we're also doing it in a public meeting, so that
Everyone knows.
Everyone now knows, we're not, we're not looking uh at a, at uh things coming up that uh are pleasant, uh totally pleasant. One crazy question, do we, do we hear any numbers from Cape Cod Tech? Did our number, w- with our numbers of the region going up, did Cape Cod Tech go down, maybe?
I don't think they went down, but just a nominal change, and their budget is so miniscule.
It's so small, it's not there.
Participation in the overall district.
I've also heard that uh the tech schools, the state changed the rules, that it's now a hundred percent lottery
What?
To get into them. I, I'm not sure if that, because you, before it was applications, but now it's, I mean, and they would go through it, admit some and not admit others, now it may all be straight lottery, anyway.
My last thing here, Jerry, was on that bottom of the sheet, uh ballot override questions. So the third, or perhaps more than three, however you choose to do it, would be any supplemental services. You could ask for all, all the things you're asking for in one article, or you could have them itemized one by one.
She
And I just want to add that, just currently, so just to, you know, this will be a tough year, because everything is getting expensive, our staff especially. And that's the nature of where we are in the world at the end of the, the, the armpit. But we're trying to maintain competitiveness, and they're, they're valuable assets to us and our community. And uh, you know, we are the, uh, we're the backstop now, you know, there's not a lot of outside aid coming in from the federal government. Um the state has, is a report out from the Mass Municipal Association on the effects of Proposition Two and a Half, and how the state hasn't stepped up over the years with increasing state aid proportionately. Um, you know, so we are the community, and one of my goals here, well, one of my goals tonight, was really just to socialize this message that it's a tough year. But as we move forward, wanna really indicate the things that we are in our control and the things that aren't. And the things that are in our control, I think we do pretty well, and wanna highlight, especially with our department heads, the services that the, that you're getting for those things. Um it's important that people know, if you want that level of service, this is the cost of doing business. All that being said, the balanced budget, which I know theoretically isn't balanced, because we gotta add collective bargaining in schools to it, but at the moment is less than a two percent increase, it's somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars, if we could go with that budget. So adding, you know, some amount of money in overrides, um obviously does increase the cost, but we're starting at a low spot, so.
Suzanne, you want to?
Um I have a question and then a comment, so the question is the timeline on how long collective bargaining takes, like when you anticipate that process being complete?
It's hard to say, we started, and we've been aggressive with meeting dates.
Right.
Um so we have meetings every week with at least one of the five.
Okay.
And we're trying to progress some along, um but it takes two sides, and two sides gotta negotiate, two sides have to agree. And um, and ju- rightfully so, they're asking for a lot, and we're trying to ju- ask them to justify it and trying to let them see our point, we're trying to get something out of it uh as well, so that we can go to town meeting saying, listen, it costs a lot, like, here's what we're getting, the benefit we're getting by agreeing with.
March, January, February?
Uh so generally speaking, Eastham has agreed on all their contracts going into town meeting, so we would know for town meeting exactly what the numbers were.
And if we did, we could also provide a placeholder.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But that's, you know, uh many towns don't do that, I know Churro had a, one where they had a two-year two-year negotiation period, Chatham has done that several times, we've never done that. But this is gonna be a really tough year, it's a tough year for both sides.
Yeah, I think about this a lot, and I think about taxes a lot, and my one, I might say this more, more than once, but my little pep talk is, when I talk to most people, the things that they want their taxes spent on are like these sorts of tangible services that impact the community, and we have such a transparent tax process, like you can come and look at our budget, and these are our neighbors doing these jobs, like this is an employer for the community, this is education for children, and um I'm not saying that having a tax increase doesn't, isn't a financial burden, but it is a very direct, you can see where the tax dollars go, and it reflects the values of our community in that, and so I'm gonna carry that with me, and probably say it more than once as we move through this. And I do really value the fact that our community does continue to support education in the way that it does, and support our town services and values the C O A and the library and the beaches, and, you know, it's nice to live in a town that values those things, so.
Taxes do purchase something, and that's Taxes do purchase something and that's, that's what is, that's one of the things that I want to. Just a a gut feeling from Jerry for all of you to think on, because I'm not wedded to it. I'm much more in favor of significant number of override questions so that the town. Citizens will have the right to pick, will have the ability to pick and choose, not put it together all as one, so it's an up and down plebiscite. Just as, but that gets to be confusing as well as you go to uh go to education. So I wanna look at it, I'm glad you've set this up with some of those ideas, Rich and Jackie and. I, when we come to it, I don't, I I I'm not sure where I want to go. I'd like.
I agree, Jerry, I think what Rich has tried to do. At least in setting it up for me and in our discussions is what is essential? What can we live with even if none of the overrides pass, right? So what's essential, what is really necessary? What are the state mandates that are honestly really necessary, because I don't know how we do them without more staff? And then what is really discretionary so that people can choose and.
Right.
You know, as as Bob said, you know, all additional staffing is discretionary unless it's a mandated.
Right.
Position.
Yeah, I I agree, I just think it's it's good to let. The citizens uh understand and have some. Some meaningful choice in what they want to do vis-à-vis some of the, some of the. Especially your uh supplemental questions.
Sure, just want to chime in on this. Yeah, I, just from my angle of entry on this, I think that the educational aspect of the budget, that's like a s- the social contract. And to me, I mean, our parents paid for all of this when we were coming up. And now it's our turn. And to me, that is just the way it works. So if we're talking about discretionary, to me, that's not discretion.
Yeah, I he's got it in general, Bob's got, uh, Bob, yeah, you're Bob. Rich has it in the, Rich has it in the general override.
Yes.
And for the the state mandated inspectional services, we had discussed a little bit, having. Fees cover some of that, but it, would it be easier to put it in? To an override as an extra staff person and then have fees cover part of it?
Maybe the fees cover it all, maybe they don't, but generally you don't know that in year one and it's time to phase the fees in, so.
Okay.
The conservative approach is to override the amount, get the fees, and then when the fees are proved themselves, you can use that to reduce it in the next year.
And and yeah, and the purpose of making that an override is because it certainly wouldn't be fair to add a new position that we couldn't afford. And then have to let someone go.
Right.
Who's held a position.
Right.
That the community's already voted on.
Okay.
Right. Well, thank you. Any other questions for for Rich, for Rich? Glad we had this meeting after my Thanksgiving meal.
It's gonna be okay. We've gotten through all the other budgets. We made it through COVID. We made it through a lot of things.
Made it through a lot of stuff. All right, I think the next thing we're on is the town manager search and Lori, you sent us.
Look at how patient she's been on.
I know, well, she's, she likes to see where we get, get a feel of where we are so that. We won't jump on her too hard, so go ahead. Well, I, I. As I looked at your proposal, as we discussed last meeting to go forward. Or two meetings ago, I think, to go forward with first with the um. In-house uh candidates as we look at it and we now that closed and we now have. A uh. There was one application and kind of set up the process to go forward. The only question, a- and it looks, it looks. Fine for me and others can come and talk. The only question I had. Thinking about it was the transition period, which you had in here, if we do go forward and and. With the in-house candidate. Of January twentieth to March thirty thirty-one that you kind of suggest, you know, this is our guideline. One of the things that you want to try and do uh when you uh have a transition. Is to allow the current office holder a glide path out. Uh they tried that in my, where I was and. For some reason it didn't work and it was more kind of a cliff out and that was not the best for the, for the organization.
What Jackie wants, a cliff.
Jackie wants a cliff, she wants to go, she wants to drive.
April and May would be my glide path, except there's a town meeting.
Uh, yes.
Hundred and sixteen overrides.
Yes, no, so so I think that that a- as we look at this, I mean, this is, this is a suggestion. Uh and and we can look at it, I think if we do go this path, one of the things that we would have to uh. Do as a select board looking at it is take a hard look at the transition period and what we want to do with it. With you leaving at the beginning of June and the beginning of May being the the town meeting and how we want. How we would want any of that to happen, even if we go with an outside, someone outside. How do we want to, how do we want to work your uh. Path to the door.
I won't.
Can we?
Being nice.
Look at the closer dates timeline before we.
Yes, yeah, no, no, I I just. I'm looking.
Sorry, you want me to make an appointment in the next two weeks to do something? And that's, that's.
Yes, well, yes.
Also, you want me to make a decision?
Okay, so go ahead. Now we're opening up, others can speak. Uh I'll let the vice chair go next. Go ahead.
Just gonna let you introduce it and then I was gonna have questions about the timeline um. Uh if, yeah, I had a specific question, but you can.
Well, I think, um the question looking on here, do you like the inner, first step for us would be. A meeting, each one of us separately meeting with. The candidate Rich um to uh.
No need to.
Between now and the twelfth or so of. Or between now and our next meeting, which is the fifteenth of December.
Right.
Is that doable for us? I know we're in the ho- we're, you know, you're in this hol- a short holiday period as Thanksgiving was the latest it could possibly be. But is that something that's uh good for, and that's each individual, i- is that, is that a good? Is that goo- is that doable?
It could be a phone meeting too, or, yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't have to be, and actually. I don't think it's required that you even have a meeting with, if you don't feel like it, because we're gonna have an open. An open meeting with whichever seat has the trapdoor is where Rich will sit and 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 we will. Have open meeting with discussion, questions, discussion and so forth.
Giving us the opportunity in the next three weeks, two weeks to sit down if we want to.
If you want to, yes.
And you could certainly do that after.
Yeah.
The fifteenth, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, it's fair.
Well, so. Okay, so it said individual interviews. I. Don't personally feel prepared to do an interview and would love some support from somebody on that if that's.
So this is not an interview per se.
Okay.
This would be, I would hope, a time when you guys would not necessarily worry about. Interview questions, because we're gonna have a time for that, as Jerry said. But but really candid, if you have candid concerns, if you're worried about the future, if you want to ask. Rich specific questions, uh and an opportunity to get to know him in a different way. So I would say make it as casual as possible.
Okay.
You know, off-site, have coffee, take a walk, you know. Meet somewhere else and just, you know, take a little bit of time to do that.
Okay, and then the public interview says December fifteenth and then it reads.
We'd like to put that off a little bit.
That's one, that's one of the things of, yeah, how soon, I mean, you you want to have the public interview. Sooner rather than later in case you we, you have to have the possibility of. No, we want to look outside and you have to have time to do that. So I think that's, Lori probably put this together with that in mind. The fifteenth might be too soon and you push it off to the second meeting in in January. I don't know if you do it right after January, January first, but.
And it doesn't have to be at a regular meeting, we can also schedule, set aside an hour or an hour and a half.
But it has to be a public meeting, open to the public, recorded.
That's correct.
Et cetera.
Public interviews, what would that look like?
Public interview.
It would, yeah, it would look like.
Public session, it would be a meeting like this.
You could send any potential questions you have to Lori. Lori and I will look at those questions and sort of help you suggest a a menu of questions. Yeah, once you've, once you've settled on, once we've figured out what the questions are, then I would suggest. We give them to the candidate because that has been the practice in the past. And then we schedule a time, but it does have to be a a posted meeting.
Posted meeting and.
Does the, can the public ask questions?
No.
No, this would be our, just our meeting.
Look, and I was like.
Well, as we, in the sense that it's be open to the public, they can sit in and and watch and.
Totally get it.
And even if we have prepared questions. You always have to have the ability for a follow-up. If an answer to the prepared question brings up another item in your.
Sure.
Mind, you 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 ask it, so it, so it really um is um. It's not a, i- it's not a a a grilling, but in some ways it turns out to be. You're asking questions, can be pointed questions about things and getting a response. Uh I don't know, we could even decide, I guess it's mostly my decision, whether or not you would like to. Give uh the candidate the opportunity to make an opening statement or not. And I think I always, my view is you always give that opportunity if they so desire. But um and go forward, I think December fifteenth might be a bit soon. It also might be a more of a difficult time even for the for public if they wanted to come, because you're right in the middle of a. Of a busy holiday season, as as I said, it's a shorter one, i- as shortest it could be. So maybe we we do uh do it in January and I think January would be enough. Time if we decide we want to go in a different direction, that we still have some time before. June eight, or before the town meeting, so there's a, you know, some time.
You don't think two weeks is enough time to? I've set up for the public interview, I, I mean.
To to, no, no, we were just saying that it's difficult, we we could set it up, but the thought is. It is a difficult time for the public to.
To witness it, I mean, it's filmed, it's.
I think it's more a difficult time for us because we are, we're doing the. Trying to hone in on the budget. Your budget presentation is mandated by the charter as the first meeting in January.
Right.
So there's a lot of work um between now and January. It it's a holiday period for the public, but it certainly isn't for the finance director.
Well, our first meeting in January is the fifth, which is pretty.
The fifth?
Yeah. We could bump it to that.
Yeah.
Or right after that, you could do, you know.
Yeah.
Could be, it could be a meeting that's, it's not a.
We could just make the interview be the budget hearing.
Yes, no, we we could. It could be that we just have a separate called meeting. For this so that it doesn't interfere with whatever business we have to do, we just get that done on January fifth and January. Seventh or something we have.
Yes, okay.
After me, that might, that actually, I'm thinking off the top of my head, which is dangerous, but that's probably is better. A better thought that we just take, we have a meeting that is just the interview, no other town business.
And in terms of um publicizing it, I would like to to invite the public to sit in and watch it. And two weeks, I don't necessarily think is a super appropriate amount of time to. Inform the public that we're gonna ha- do it and then do it and have it come into their schedule. I would rather there be more lead time that we can put out.
But it is taped, Suzanne, so anyone can watch it. You could go back and watch mine.
No, I know.
Previously.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I just, you know, it, it's a hard time to grab the public's attention because it is. The holidays and we do ask a lot of the public to like pay attention to so many things and.
For January then, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, Jan.
What if we?
We think a separate, a separate meeting, does that, that makes some sense? I think that makes some sense. I mean, we could even do a separate meeting if you want to do it after December fifteenth, but uh it's probably.
No, I say, I don't, I'd say between December fifteenth and January fifth, we should be adding anything to any.
Right, so.
Um.
What?
Yeah, so then do we want?
Look at calendar, yeah.
Agenda item for the fifteenth where we finalize dates?
Yeah.
Yeah, for for, well, we'll have an agenda, so come, come prepared for uh your, with your calendars to see what day.
But.
Other than January fifteenth, like.
If we do want to sit with.
Rich, we should do that.
Yes, and um Erica can help schedule stuff if you need it and she can also, we can also send out some kind of doodle poll for. The first two weeks in January to get a sense of the five of you and.
Right.
Yeah.
So that we go into the fifteenth with some idea.
No, what what the good dates are, yeah.
The good dates might be.
Uh Lori, on on this uh conduct public interviews and meet and greet, but. We just, that's a basically a meet and greet for us to meet the candidate and greet the candidate, because it's not a public meeting, it's not for the public.
Well, it's a public meeting, so, you know.
And I think we want to do meet and greets once you've made a decision.
Yes, there's, there, that's a separate, that's down, yeah.
Further down too, yeah.
Yeah.
Schedule community and community committee meet and greets, yeah, with all the committees, et cetera.
Yeah.
The other. Point that I think we need to consider, I don't think we need to decide it tonight, contract negotiations. So that's a negotiation between us and the candidate. My view is country, I guess we could, that that would likely be an exception, but we should probably just have one or two of us. There for negotiations, your thought on that, Jackie, and your thought on it, Lori?
Yeah, normally it's the chair, with a chair and the vice chair.
All right.
And then you bring to an executive session for the whole.
So for the transition period is. Not looking at the dates, is the expectation that. The person would be hired in that role and then that would have, or are we doing a softer landing?
Yeah, you'd make it, I would think you'd make an offer.
Okay.
And then negotiate a contract beginning a date certain.
Okay, and that could, but the transition period is expected to be both, both of the people on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hired in.
Yeah.
The role. And the expectation for our public interview is that by the end of it, we will. Discuss. And then make a decision about moving forward or not.
Yes.
Okay.
And usually you do that in public.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so.
And then after we make a decision and have a con- well, it's not just our decision, you have to have a contract signed, so I mean. Asking Rich to work for a dollar a year, he might not want to sign on, but but the um. Then you would have community meet and greet, committee. Then you would have community meet and greet, committee meet and greets after. We've made the decision and there's a contract signed, whether or not that's the data when transition starts or not, doesn't matter. You start. You want to start getting this out to the public.
I think the the overlap period, the transition period is huge because given where we are with our candidates internally. We're gonna need another finance director.
Right, there there's a lot of stuff that has to to go on, finance director, another assistant town manager as well. Could be the same person, may not, but those are.
So I like the lengthier, I like the lengthier.
Transition period, yeah, it, and I think the the hiring of the assistant town, the finance director and or. Assistant town manager or a joint so forth is not. Not our decision, it's.
No.
There's.
The town manager's decision and I will have to work the transition period if it's there, who whose decision it is. Which person is making that decision?
Well, I do think that once you have offered the position to the next person. Then it would be my intention to defer any decisions, any future decisions to that person. So it's not like I won't be here and we won't talk about things and I won't be at town meeting as my final town meeting is town manager. But I certainly wouldn't step in and say, let's hire so and so, even though you want so and so.
I understand, yes, yeah.
And I think, you know, in this scenario, we're we're fine.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I. All right, we're set. We'll be, so here's what we have. Hopefully before our next meeting. If we want to speak with Rich individually, we shall. At the next meeting, we will set up a time for a. Called select board meeting sometime in early January.
Mid to early.
Mid to early, early to mid-January. And that would be the time for the public interview of the candidate.
Formal interview, yeah.
A for, yeah, formal public interview of the candidate, after which we might make a decision then or. Think about it, come back and make a decision, but make a decision then whether to offer. At that point, I think. Would be when you start negotiations, not before. Am I right on that, Lori? That would be the time we would do it. And we will. Go forth there. If we get a contract, we do that and then hopefully we'll part of our interview process most likely be what are you gonna do about these other positions here? But whatever the case, that's that's how we'll do. So I think those are the steps that, does that make sense? Were you okay with that? I mean, otherwise, I mean, I'm all open. I'm not pushing a certain. Time timeline here.
All we've done is move the public discourse to. Yeah, well, early in the.
Early in January and and now the public is hopefully high, is aware, is aware of what we're doing and it's gonna happen and. So, all right. Anything else, anybody have anything to ask Lori, ask Jackie or Rich on this process? Listen, thank you.
Lori, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Oh, yeah.
Just if you want to start sending questions.
Okay.
We'll work on putting them together cohesively. You know, you may have similar thoughts, so we can clump things together.
Yeah, we'll do that. That's good.
Do you have? Questions from?
The past?
From the past.
Yeah, no.
Ask that you can send out?
It's a question.
Yeah, that. Yeah, if you could send those, so, cuz. I just went, oh, I've never asked a question in my life, which is not true, but, you know, you're like, what's for dinner? And you're like.
What'd you have for breakfast?
All right, I, Lori, thank you for moving us along. I was always in angst. I had at the beginning of my. Term is that we're gonna be running crazy in April and May to hire someone and.
It's gonna be fine.
We have a good setup and and I do think a glide path is the way we want to go. Where it's going out. So thank you.
You gave us an aggressive timeline and then we went, whoa, 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 whoa.
That's all right.
Mine has some Darius worries.
Also shared his worries, so.
I'll take the heat on that one. That's why.
No, I I'm into it. I, yeah.
I just didn't want to have that messed up. We can't. We don't want to be. Be rushed into decision as June comes faster than we think.
He turns December already.
Yeah, it's 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 already December.
Thinking about it.
How many days do you have left, Amy?
You know, I should start that countdown day.
Your countdown days, the short timer calendar?
The nineteenth of May.
It's, it's like twenty seven weeks, something like that. I'm keeping track.
Have to stand on a dime to look over a nickel, right? Remember those days? Anyway, be that. Yeah, uh. The town manager.
Thirty-two, she is.
But who's counting?
So it's exciting to be able to give you the HR update, at least for a second, that we were fully staffed. Except for a couple of, you know, positions that are sort of in formation. The the communications scene, I think, is really been well, well received by the public. They are loving the podcast and it is now available on YouTube and via Spotify.
How do you get to? I go to the webpage. How do I get to that podcast from the Eastham?
You go to YouTube and you.
Town YouTube channel.
Just go to YouTube and Google it in the search. If you if you just Google Eastham, you'll get all of the select board meetings and, yeah.
All right, I just, might be nice to have a link from on the.
I don't think, I think we tried.
It is.
Well, we have a link on our.
Meeting videos, there's the YouTube channel right there. You can subscribe to it right on the meeting videos.
But I'm not sure it works.
Oh.
I think it does and we can also get one right on the homepage for a bit of time just to.
Yeah, to encourage people.
You know, they're good, but.
They're very good.
Make it easier for people to get to. Sorry to interrupt, Jackie.
It it works. I just tried it.
Okay, good. And we're doing, you know, she's, in addition to the podcast, we're still doing a lot of outreach via. All the social media and some print stuff, so I think it's working out really well. Another big highlight is we have secured three year round rentals and leased to locals, so those are all brand new.
That's three, that's good.
Rentals, so that's, I, three is something considering, you know, we didn't have three before.
We all got our postcard. Those were great.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got the postcard.
And the big news has been, of course, this new mandate from the state about the. Building inspections for short-term rentals. That has caused quite a kerfuffle. But I think we have done a decent job at this point of not only. Sending out the information to all the people who've previously registered, but we're now, you know, directly sending. To the list of people that are on town. Well, that are on wells as opposed to town water so that they can get their, they know that they can start their application and then do their water tests later when they get here. So I would encourage anyone, if you're listening and and you got the. Short-term rental registration and you're like, how am I gonna do this by the end of January? You just have to start the application so we know you're there and that will be a placeholder. For us to then begin to schedule water tests and inspections and things like that. And there's an open house regarding the Cable Road Multi-Use Path Project in Eastham. December sixteenth from six to seven at Saw Pond Visitor Center. Again, it's an odd time, but I think they're trying to move along with their. Capital projects too. So, short, but there's a, some good stuff in there.
Under communications, would you, for the Turn It Up Podcast, would you want it under latest news, maybe?
Sure.
Mostly just cuz.
On the website, yeah.
On the website, yeah, because.
Yeah. I mean, I I hit meeting videos one, right?
Yeah.
It just says like a, as a, when people come to the landing page of the website and they like scroll around. It'll be like the first thing that's up there since.
Okay.
That's good.
Better, yeah.
I mean, you could pick any other of the, you could pick the town, the police accreditation if you want, I don't know. That one was from September, so if you added another, it would.
All right. Back to any. Old. Other business, of course, on, oh, do minutes. My mistake. Upcoming agenda items, anybody have anything other than we know what we're doing on December fifteen?
I think I gave Jackie about the recycling committee charge for next, next week, next meeting.
That's looking good. We're just putting it in the format.
Format.
Okay, good. That's mine. We'll have that on. Anything else? No? Okay, minutes, November seventeenth. I had just one. One suggested change, instead, co-chair, you had co-chair for Suzanne, it should be vice chair.
Okay.
Watch the meeting.
Which one?
Being honest.
The seventeenth, that's, it's, that's okay.
I also haven't gotten to it.
So do I have a motion?
Me and the boys, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the seventeen.
Second, with that, with that change?
With that change. Vice chair.
Any first further discussions? Well, we've got to, all in favor?
Aye.
Those abstentions to abstentions.
Yeah, I mean. I'll vote on the minutes. The minutes look good.
Well, you want to vote? Yes, okay, four, four zip, all right. Because even though you you weren't there, you can watch it and stuff. All right, next item of.
Could I change what happened?
Is any other business?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Any further discussions? You're fast, Amy. None? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, we're adjourned.